You're doing what I said.
You're not on.
Yeah, it's real. The human. Like words. Did you get transferred, Lawrence? So was it, was it the other guy?
He submitted that five. He closed the counter. I told him he comes to the meeting.
Or do you when it comes out of time?
Is that on the recorder?
I haven't started yet.
All right, just checking.
Just let these folks sit in real quick. Thank you.
Just, no, just no one wants to sit up front.
They come out.
Yeah.
No, like you.
Well, really?
Yeah. Cause you really can't have. This is the best thing.
Just give it one more minute.
It's jumping. Hmm? It's jumping.
Yeah. Sure. We're almost there. Okay, at six thirty-one, I call a meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the five United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, just wanted to identify, we have a recording device here up front for the purposes of taking minutes, and we're also streaming the, uh, the meeting online as well. Prior to this meeting, we had an executive session where we talked about real estate personnel and, uh, financial matters. Um, so we move into the approval of minutes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on March eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion for, from Supervisor Derek Hinesian and seconded by Supervisor Iacono. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Uh, before we get into the treasures report, I'd like to, uh, move one agenda item up in the agenda. This would be under education, section F, for the appointment of the junior supervisor. Uh, Supervisor Davy.
Thank you. We, uh, have our, uh, new junior supervisor here, who, um, the selection committee from the high school, uh, high school, uh, went through the applicants and, uh, chose, um, as the equally do. So at this point, I would motion to appoint, uh, Leah Consiglio as our twenty twenty-five junior supervisor.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Supervisor Davy, seconded by Supervisor Iacono. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
No.
Have you got sworn in officially?
Do you mind if she goes back to your right?
No, of course not.
I'm not.
Leah, you're gonna place your left hand on the level, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Leah Consiglio. I Leah Consiglio solemnly swear. Solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend. That I will support, obey, and, okay, defend the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of this common law. And the Constitution of this common law. I will discharge the duties of my office. I will discharge the duties of my office. As Bethel Township's junior supervisor. As Bethel Township's junior supervisor. With final. With final. Congratulations.
Sure, do you want to take a picture?
Yeah.
Yeah. Send yours. Sorry. Seems it gets more. I mean, it's beard.
One, two, three, a little bit higher there. One, two, three, one. And.
Congratulations.
Come on, I'm gonna see it back there for you.
Sorry, I should have gone right there.
Fantastic. Thank you. Uh, we'll move now on to the treasure report. Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, hopefully you've had an opportunity to take a look at my report. Uh, I'll, uh, just go over a couple, uh, uh, highlights within the report, if I may. Uh, the cash on hand, the various funds, uh, totaling, uh, all monies within the township, uh, as of the end of March was seven, uh, million, six hundred, two thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. Uh, the beginning of the month, our cash balance was four million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-four cents, reflecting a, uh, almost a two-point-seven million dollar increase, reflecting the, uh, uh, real estate tax increase, uh, or collections within the month during the discount period, the first month of the discount period, uh, jet, which, uh, reflects a, certainly a, uh, very, uh, uh, healthy, healthy increase. The, uh, cash balance, uh, is actually up from a year ago, about one-point-five million dollars, which reflects strong cash balance, strong, uh, fiscal management here, uh, at all levels of the, of the township. Uh, the general fund remains healthy. Uh, unadjusted net income for the three months was, uh, eight hundred and four thousand. We budgeted, uh, two hundred and fifty-five, so we're, uh, about five and a half, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars over budget. Uh, what we do is, when we do our budgets on a monthly basis, we take last year's cash flow, um, and insert it into the budget, and that's how we, uh, we actually estimate the, uh, cash flow to be for this year. So, um, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar net income in our general fund could be a timing issue. You know, we're basing it on last year's cash flow. Um, but we try to be, try to project it as accurately as possible. So that might be a little rosy at this point. When we get a little further, we've only had three months worth of activity. Get a little bit further into the year, it'll be, it'll, it'll even add a little bit more and be more reflective of our, our current activity. But, you know, uh, we're showing a positive budget variance on the revenue side of four hundred and seventeen thousand and a hundred and forty thousand were below expenses, which makes up that five hundred and fifty-eight. Once again, if, if, uh, if we had shifted expenses into the budget and income, uh, out, it would not be as rosy, so we just really have to see how this goes. Um, further in the year, as we go further in the year, the trash fund, uh, same thing. For the three months, uh, we're, uh, we're showing, uh, just over a million dollar profit. We budgeted six hundred and ninety-seven, which was our, based upon our cash flow from the prior year. So we're three hundred and thirty, uh, thousand dollars in the black in that fund, and that's one of the funds we really have to watch and keep our eyes on because of, of the tax collections. Um, but that's looking strong as well. So with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions from the board?
Peter, we still don't have the, uh, EMS fund, uh, transferred to Pliggett, right?
Right, that's correct.
We're having some challenges.
Yeah, I spoke, spoke to Pliggett today. I played phone tag with the representative. Unfortunately, I didn't catch her. My cut is, I'm gonna come here tomorrow, I'm gonna, she's supposed, she's supposed to call me. I'm gonna have her actually draft the document. That was one of her suggestions, draft the document, fill in all the blanks, so we don't, we're not playing, you know, uh, give and take on this, on the application process. I'm hoping we can get it, get it done. Pliggett is really, really, always been traditionally difficult to deal with and getting.
I just don't remember this, taking this long, and we're losing out on some decent interests.
Well, the money is in the general fund, Pliggett. So.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, yeah. So when we move the money, we're just gonna move the, the money plus the interest. So we're not move, we're not losing interest, we're, it's just the interest isn't the right play, in the right front. Yeah, so, so that, that's, that's, we've got that covered. We just, we just have to get the application process done, and they're, they're just tough. They've always been tough. I think they're getting, and they're getting tougher, so.
Thank you, Peter. Any other questions? Okay, I'd make a motion to accept the treasure report, pay all bills, and release relevant escrows.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Supervisor Derek Hinesian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, on to the reports, going to the tax collector's report during the month of March. There were two thousand, seven hundred and eighteen invoices collected for the twenty twenty-five taxes. The total tax collected for March was two million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents, as were remitted to the township in three installments on March twenty-third, thirty-first, and April fourth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, three thousand, two hundred and one tax bills were collected out of the three thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven for an eighty-nine point four-nine percent collection. Is there any other comments, uh, Mr. Pashin?
Uh, just, uh, the numbers look pretty good, but we are sixty bills behind last year's pace, and that's not a tiny burden. Uh, sometimes the mortgage companies can get late, so I think some people are struggling with the tax increase and the transit increase, but we'll see how that goes over the next couple of months, and we'll be sending notices and reminders out, but we are alive up somewhere.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pash, I appreciate it. Okay, um, moving on to public safety.
Chief, would you like to give the reports?
Yeah. During the month of March, the Bethel Township Police Department had nine hundred and sixty calls for service. They were broken down into fifty-five medical emergencies, one stolen vehicle, seventeen alarms, sixty-eight traffic, uh, stops and, uh, that involved forty-eight citations. There were three domestics, ten crashes, four thefts, two fraud investigations, ten other criminal investigations, four hundred and fifty-nine building and development checks, two vacation home checks, fourteen suspicious vehicles and persons, and, uh, one municipal code violation, as well as two hundred and sixty-six miscellaneous, uh, and various calls. Um, the Garnet Valley, uh, the Greater Garnet Valley, I'll say, has, uh, seen an increase in the thefts from auto with the recent warm weather that we had, uh, not so much today, today, but, uh, last week. Um, we did not get hit. Thank goodness, but, um, everyone around us did. Asta did, Upper Chi did, Concord got hit bad. In fact, they ended up in a, uh, a foot chase and a vehicle chase with one of the suspects. So, uh, you know, again, please make sure your vehicles are locked at all times when they're outside. Um, these guys come, it takes them less than thirty seconds. They walk down the street, check the door. If your door is locked, they move on to the next car. Um, that's all they do. They look for open and unsecured vehicles, take some two or three seconds to go in, root through your glove box, look around, check the backseat, take what they can carry, and they're gone. So again, please make sure your vehicle's locked. And, and you know, again, as we said the past couple of months, you know, be situationally aware. If you see something that just doesn't look right, if you see someone on your block that, you know, gee, I've never seen that guy or that two guys, or it's eleven o'clock at night, when you're out walking the dog and you see somebody creeping around, call nine-one-one, give us a description if you can. You know, we'll send the cars over, we'll see if we can identify who it is. If nothing else, they see the police car, maybe they say, hey, I'm gonna go to another neighborhood somewhere else, you know, so. Unless there are any questions?
Thank you.
And like, we wanna stay up there for a commendation. Um, so we have a commendation honoring Chief John McCarthy for the successful completion of the Northwestern University Executive Management Program. Uh, whereas Chief John McCarthy has exemplified exact, exceptional dedication to professional development and leadership in law enforcement. And whereas Chief McCarthy has successfully completed the esteemed three-week executive management program sponsored by Northwestern University. And whereas this comprehensive program provided advanced instruction in critical areas, including legal updates, officer assessment and promotion, recruitment and retention, media relations, critical incident command, and crisis negotiations. And whereas Chief McCarthy's commitment to continuous education and excellence enhances law enforcement operations and strengthens the safety and well-being of our community. And whereas the expertise and leadership skills acquired through this program will benefit both the department and the community it serves. And now therefore, the Bethel Township Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes and commends Chief John McCarthy for his outstanding achievement in completing the executive management program and for his unwavering commitment to excellence in law enforcement leadership. This commendation shall be entered into the official record as a testament to Chief McCarthy's dedication and service. Congratulations.
We speak back here.
Don't beat the balls far in my head. Ready? One, two, three, and you start. Congratulations, Chief, wonderful job, thank you. Rest in peace.
So I'm gonna give a little explanation before we move to the next, uh, portion of things. So in December of twenty twenty-four, uh, one of our police cars was in, in an accident. So at that time, we decided to simultaneously get that repaired, but also, uh, purchase a new, uh, vehicle for the fleet. Um, the upfitting costs for that vehicle were charged later than expected. So we're gonna do a budgetary transfer in order to cover those, and then make a motion to pay for the repairs. Um, so I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, authorizing a budgetary transfer of seventeen thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars from account four-ten dot one-thirty, police officers payroll, to account four-ten, three-thirty, PD transportation, repairs and maintenance, to fund the repair and maintenance of police vehicles.
I will second. So motion made by Supervisor Derek Hinesian, seconded by Supervisor Denny. Uh, discussion from the board? Discussion from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then I'd like to make a motion to approve the release of payment to Concord Auto Body for the repairs to patrol vehicle eighty-three dash five, resulting from a not, from non-reportable auto accident number twenty-four dash zero zero eight six one zero, in an amount not to exceed eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents.
I second that. Motion made by Supervisor Derek Hinesian and seconded by Supervisor Denny. Any discussion from the board?
I have a question, is there a reason that this wasn't paid for through insurance?
So it did go to insurance, um, that's the, so the initial repair estimate was that, and then, um, the claim was filed with the insurance company, which subsequently issued two payments to the township, five thousand, well, like, almost, oh, what is that, fifty-five hundred dollars? Uh, the township is responsible for the three thousand dollar deductible. And so the, um, we, we just need to pay.
Okay, we're making a claim against the, the, I guess the accident was caused by the bus driver?
Yes.
We may have claimed against the school's insurance for the bounce of the deductible?
Hmm, I don't, I'm not sure.
So we're in the way? Was it ours, was it Garnet Valley or was Concord?
I don't think it was, wasn't it, was it a school bus or was it a private bus? It was like a craft bus.
Oh, really?
If I could serve.
Yeah.
It was a private bus.
Okay. Then we can, we can still make a claim for the three thousand dollars we're out of pocket, uh, against their liability care.
How do we even forward then? Do we pay, do we still pay?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we have an issue with, uh, this motion. I just think there's follow-on work for reimbursement. Correct?
Yeah, I'm not saying, yeah, I, I agree.
Any other, uh, discussion from the board? From the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Supervisor Agostino?
Thank you, Chairman. Q P P, can you report? Thank you, sir.
Uh, for the month of March, we had fifty-four calls for service, uh, one hundred and forty-five year to date, eighteen calls in Bethel, six automatic fire alarms, four EMS assists, one motor vehicle accident, one wires call, two natural gas leaks, and four brush fires. Uh, brush fires have seemed to be up this year for some reason. I think we've had more this year than we had in the last two years, so.
Wow.
Um, don't know whether it's drought conditions, what it is, but we've had a lot of brush fires. Um, we had thirty-six mutual aid assignments, uh, eight to Congerville, six to Upper Chi Chester, twelve to Tallyville, eight to Claymont, one to Lower Chi Chester, and one to Brandy one hundred. And we had three drills for the month. Also, our Easter flower sales start, uh, next Thursday, the seventeenth, to run through the nineteenth, from twelve PM to seven PM. Okay. That's all I really.
Chief?
Chief.
Have a good evening.
On to emergency medical services.
Thank you. The, uh, mainline health, uh, EMS response report for March, there were fifty calls for service, thirty-three of them were ALS calls, and seventeen of them were BLS calls. Um, into emergency management, there were no major, uh, events or major injury or property damage reported. Um, our emergency management coordinator, uh, reviewed the yearly emergency management drill with Namens Creek Country Manor, Country Manor, um, and then, uh, updated the township contact staff and attended some additional seminars. That concludes the emergency management report. Let me just keep going into. All right, the highway department report for March of twenty twenty-five. Crews cleaned and serviced mowing equipment to prepare for the season, serviced several police cars and some, had some inspections done on those cars, removed a downed tree on Garnet Mine in Bethel Roads, reinstalled the speed limit sign on E-Bright Road, which was knocked down from the storm, removed all plow spreaders and cleaned and made repairs and stored them for the summer, uh, cleaned all the trucks, uh, neutralized them from the salt, uh, and crews were out doing spring cleanup at the parks and township properties, getting ready for grass cutting season, and are also, uh, starting to ramp up for storm drain repairs and picked up supplies and got the trailer ready for that work. Buildings and grounds, they trending cleaned up around the campus and installed new mulch, cleaned and rinsed down the highway garage from the winter salt, painted the shop office and installed a new medical cabinet, restacked the stall and covered it for the summer, cleaned up the rear of the salt, salt shed and organized traffic control supplies, installed signage in the police station. Um, work, they're working on getting better ventilation in certain areas of the police station. And then, uh, the new doors in the Myers Building, uh, well, one of them in the back has been installed, um, the, the one up here will be coming soon. And that concludes the buildings and grounds report.
Thank you. On to the board reports, uh, for parks and recreation, they just completed the egg hunt on, uh, this previous Saturday at Clayton Park. Um, and we're taking the feedback now, uh, on that and, and hoping to make it better, uh, every year. Uh, with park development, the sign for Jack King Park, contract sign, and, uh, so that will be, that equipment will be delivered, uh, when it's ready and done fabrication. I did ask, uh, Matt even, just before this, we didn't have a lot of heads up, but with the improvements to the walkways, uh, the, the boardwalks at Jack King Park, we were in progress of, uh, like a wetland identification.
Yes.
So can you give us a little bit of a, a status update on that?
Yes, the, uh, the two boardwalks cost over fingers of wetlands, uh, in Jack King Park, and we're gonna, uh, replace them with a, uh, kind of a subsurface drain, and then be able to stone and pave, uh, future data over it. So that requires a, a, uh, general permit seven from the Department of Environmental Protection. And part of that process is we have to show an updated wetland delineation since the last one was done, I think in the early two thousands. Uh, that's been completed, uh, people who visit the park might have noticed some flagging hanging from trees. Uh, and, uh, the delineation's been completed, our field surveyors have located the delineation, we reduced it to plan, and now we're applying for the GP seven to, uh, allow us to make that modification to the boardwalks.
Great. And next time I'll give you more heads up before, appreciate that. Um, any questions on that process from anybody?
I had a question, kind of backing up to the sign.
Sure.
That was something we approved last year and was in last year's budget, correct?
That is correct.
And it still hasn't been completed, is that, is it in the budget for this year or?
I, I think it was, I don't know if it was purchased. And, uh, under that budget.
So we cut a check and just, they just haven't been able to do the work?
I'd have to, I'd have to find out. I don't think I have the answer. I know what happened was the, there was an agreement, they went back and forth between the solicitor, uh, with some language on warranty information, and so that agreement got signed this year, and then that had to go to. this year, and then that had to go to them to start fabrication. But I don't know where the, I don't know the financial piece of that.
I would definitely answer you look into that because I'm pretty sure it was intended to come out of last year's budget.
It was, that was definitely the intent because I think it was on the December board meeting. But I don't actually...
I'm assuming we haven't cut a check.
I haven't seen one on the bills list that I know of, but I just, I just wanna make sure.
Which department's that, please?
Jack King?
Yeah.
Yes.
Wait, Jack King's sign is already done?
Community Park, I'm sorry.
Community Park.
I feel like that one looks...
Yeah. Yeah, Jack King was, that was the beginning of last year, and then Community was the remaining funds.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay. So the, so the specific question then is, was it allocated last year?
Yeah, well, did we pay for it already, or, and if we didn't, do you have enough funds in the budget for this year to cover?
Well, I, I know that we still have enough money in the funds because there hasn't been another big development expenditure.
Until you do the boardwalks.
Yeah, well, that's still going through that permit process, but yeah. Correct. All right, I'll get to that answer.
Just look into it.
Yeah. Okay. The other items on the report, the Birdtown and B City will be doing a Bloombox fundraiser. So that'll be for spring, both like fruit and vegetable plants as well as flowering plants. There'll be a QR code, and if you were to purchase them through the Bloombox, they'll be delivered to your house. And then a portion of the funds raised goes to the Birdtown and B City activities. They held it last year, and they're looking to just try to get, if you're gonna be buying that product anyways, take a look at the website, it might be of interest to you. And they are just continuing the progress of getting prepared for the cornmeal in August, so getting contracts in place. And that concludes the Parks and Recreation Report. There are a couple of other items. The first one is an authorization to contract Brandywine Tree and Shrub. This is down and damaged trees at Jack King Park, so there was an estimate provided in the packet. And I'd like to make the motion for the authorization to contract Brandywine Tree and Shrub for the removal of trees at Jack King Park in an amount not to exceed $6,000.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Supervisor Derek Hinesian. Any discussion on this from the board? Or from the public? All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The second item, also there's some backstory in the packet. This is, there was a grant that was acquired late last year by the Parks and Recreation Board. It's a $500 mini-grant and it's a zero match. And it's for the establishment of a Songbird Garden. So the general dimensions of that garden are about 10 by 15, and it was looking to locate that kind of close to where the gazebo is at Atkinson Park. And the intent is to reutilize the brick pavers that used to be surrounding the trees there, so put them back. That's the pavers that have residents' names on them, and to, you know, have a perennial Songbird Garden. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the establishment of a Songbird Garden in John Atkinson Park in collaboration with the Birdtown and B City Committee utilizing a $500 grant secured by Parks and Recreation.
Do Songbirds fight geese?
Yeah, maybe we need a tack bird garden. Ah, yeah, do not know that.
Second.
Is that a motion not to exceed 500?
It's a motion to utilize the grant.
So we need to cap the expenditure?
We have not.
And then how are we authorizing, paying them something, you know, how much do they cost? Do we have estimates? Who's putting this in?
So some of the preparation's gonna be done by the highway department, and then it's the establishment of the garden is gonna be through the volunteer efforts of the Parks and Recreation Board.
Well, I don't know what that means. So are there any plants purchased?
Yes.
Who's buying the plants?
Parks and Recreation Board.
So we're buying the plants. How much money are we spending on plants?
Well, the whole intent is to not go beyond the $500.
Well, that was what I asked. Are you making a motion not to exceed 500?
Well, that's not the, that's not the writing of the motion.
I understand that, but, so so that's, but the motion you're making is to establish a Songbird Garden not to exceed $500?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just make sure it's clear. I know that's a grant.
Yeah.
But we can't make a motion for a blank check, I don't.
Understood. Although hopefully it's, it's a $0 commitment. We're also evaluating the opportunity of donated plants.
Well, that's fine. I mean, if we're getting a $500 grant, I assume we have a $500 grant to do it. What happens if we don't use the $500? Do they basically reimburse costs?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so you guys have a motion to second, and you have sort of what I would call a friendly amendment to your motion, right? Like we've, we're adding this $500 cap. So if we could just get the person who made the motion and the person who seconded the motion to agree to that amendment and then call the vote accordingly, and when we do the minutes, it'll just be, be the motions as amended.
Okay.
So you agree to your...
I agree, I made the motion, and I agree to the amendment.
I also agree.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other comments from the board? Or from the public? Would you like me to reintroduce the motion?
No, I think you, I think you've got it on the table.
All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Onto zoning hearing board.
Thank you. The Bethel Township Zoning Hearing Board Report for March 2025. The board had one item on the agenda in March. It was a variance request for a front yard fence at 47 Vannuti Drive. This request was granted with conditions. The next, the board's next meeting will be held on Wednesday, April 23rd at 7:00 PM. At this time, the board will be considering the following variance requests. 2025-03, an application for a property located at 1262 Sharon Drive. The applicant is requesting to construct in addition to the rear of his dwelling. 2025-04, application for a property located at 1273 Kirk Road. Applicant is seeking relief from, in order to erect two wall signs each containing 37 square feet in lieu of allowable maximum 25 square feet. And then 2025-05, an application at 23 Robbins Road. Applicant is requesting to construct a rear yard gazebo and has a lot that's less than 300, or 30,000 square feet. Applicant has an existing shed on the property and that allows for only one accessory structure on a lot less than 30,000 square feet. And that report was respectfully submitted by Gary Lanahan. Anything to add, Mr. Lanahan? Thank you. That concludes the report.
Thank you. Planning Commission?
Planning Commission did not have a meeting this month. There was nothing on the agenda, so we'll see if anything pops up for next month.
Thank you. Sewer authorities, Supervisor Giagostino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bethel Township Sewer Authority met on April 3rd. Some of the highlights were the Powell Road Pump Station upgrade, which is looking for a summer 2025. Continue work on the smoke testing repairs. They received a grant to install four new generators, and they also passed a resolution to apply to a Commonwealth Financing Authority Grant application for Scotts Glen Sewage Pump Station. Donna, anything additional? All right, that's all I have.
Thank you. Onto education, Supervisor David?
Thank you. After months of planning and various approvals, the painting and school project is now officially underway. All necessary demolition permits have been secured, asbestos baiting is now complete. In coming days, everyone will begin to see the fencing and silk barriers installed around the site. Once they're in place, heavy machinery will arrive and the area will transition into an active demolition zone. After the demolition's over, work on the field improvement projects will also take place. The school has also received news about the Smith Bridge, the Smith Bridge Road Project, sorry, which includes new turning lanes at the high school entrance, a caved walking trail from the high school to middle school, and a traffic circle at Kirk and Temple Roads. And that could break ground as early as September, so keep an eye on those developments going forward. The library, we have a proclamation. Proclamation 2025-02 declaring April 6th through 12th, 2025, Library Week, where as libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination, inspire lifelong learning, offering a space for individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities. Whereas libraries serve as vibrant community hubs, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning. Whereas libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools, and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals have the support they need to learn, connect, and thrive. Whereas the PA4 Literacy is Power Initiative highlights how libraries and staff encourage literacy in basic information, civic, and social health and financial, which contributes to greater personal and community success. Whereas libraries partner with schools, businesses, and organizations, connecting the dots to maximize resources, increasing efficiency, and expand access to essential services, strengthening the entire community. Whereas libraries workers have worked to expand fluency and digital literacy skills needed to navigate the online world, which 21st century information exists. Whereas libraries nurture young minds through storytime, STEAM programs, and literacy initiatives, fostering curiosity and a level of learning. Whereas libraries empower job seekers, entrepreneurs, and lifelong learners of providing the access to resources, training, and opportunities that support career growth and economic success. Whereas getting a library card is a financially literate action. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers across the country are joined together to celebrate National Library Week under the theme Drawn to the Library. Now therefore, the Bethel Township Board of Supervisors proclaim April 6th through 12th, 2025, Library Week for Bethel Township. During this week, the board encourages all residents to visit, register for the library, and celebrate the opportunities they unlock for us every day. I'll make a motion that the board adopt proclamation 2025-02 as read.
Motion made by Supervisor Davey and seconded by Supervisor Derek Hinesian. All is in favor? Aye. Motion carries. So I have?
I think we have the library director here.
Yes.
I was hoping to get a picture of you guys with the preparation.
I don't...
Perfect.
I have a colored copy here and...
You're becoming a photographer tonight.
It's like a high school yearbook night.
You want?
Here's your colored copy. I do need that, Mike. Sure.
Then I don't have to, um, you're asking in a sentence.
Oh, very well, you know, for a body. How are you?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, all time. Yes. Turn this one here. Don't be afraid, girl. Go on, you're supervisor now, you ready? One, two, and three. There's two, and that was mine. Right? So I'm gonna just make this my wife. Oh, my God, no. My knees are cracking. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do need that, that's the original copy, but I can give you a blank copy. I'll scan it, too. How about that?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Let me check my stats for the day.
Dr. Addison, I think you're gonna be next.
We're gonna contract Bill out for photography services if anybody's interested.
Oh, do you have anything?
Yeah, Dr. Addison, yeah, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Recycling and trash collection tips for success. How about that? Recycling pickups, private, okay? Place recyclables loose in designated bins or paper bags only. Plastic bags are not accepted as they interfere with the processing and will not be collected. Trash collection. Household trash is collected once per week. All trash must be placed in containers or securely tied in trash bags. Loose items should be bundled and tied a maximum of 36 inches. Prohibited items. Certain materials cannot be collected curbside, such as computers, refrigerators, propane tanks, televisions, and tires. There's a full list of the prohibited items on the Bethel Township's website under Trash and Recycling. Customer support for our disposal company. Residents can now access live customer service chat support with our disposal company through the township's website under Trash and Recycling Services. This service provides quick assistance for trash and recycling inquiries and has been a highly effective resource for residents. Instead of going through the calling process, we're able to get on an app and chat, which seems to be working out well. Upcoming spring cleanup and special events. The township is offering additional services to assist residents with the seasonal cleanup. Spring yard waste pickup Monday, May 12th. That will be posted on the website. And then our annual spring paper shredding and drug takeback. That'll be Saturday, May 17th. I did not say the date for the spring yard pickup. That's my mistake. Monday, May 12th. And for events details, locations, guidelines, please feel free to visit our township's website and social media page. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Phil, I have a question on track while you're talking about that. Sure, you do. Thank you. Is there, do we have a, some sort of understanding with them as to the hours of closing collecting? We do. And what are those hours? Well, we have referred them to the noise warnings. I often pass them around 5:30 in the morning, driving up our roads, depending on what precinct that they're actually going to. They are starting to collect trash from 6:30 to 7:00, only because they say it helps them with the larger state roads because of congestion, how it times out. Mainly Namens Creek Road and not Bethel Road. Namens Creek Road is the primary problem from Bush Corners, the separation of precinct one and two. And Wynn is another variable of itself. Thank you, Shane.
Okay, thank you. Onto new business. The first item is a renewal of our application for our cyber risk assessment. So we have to fill out the application to allow for proper quotations from vendors, insurance suppliers, for cyber risk insurance policies. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to renew our cyber risk insurance policy through R3J Gallagher and Company, subject to the solicitor's review.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Supervisor Derek Hinesian. Any questions from the board? From the public? All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. It's that time of year again for our road program. As we do yearly, the roads were driven and analyzed, and our engineer has put together an estimate. The roadways we're anticipating doing this year are similar to what was slated for last year but weren't able to occur. We did add a couple of new areas, a curb repair, a patch on Zebly Road, and some additional inlet repairs. So with that, I'd like to make, to make a motion to advertise for the 2025 road program.
I will second that. Motion made by Supervisor Iaconia and seconded by Supervisor Denny. Is there any discussion from the board on this? And I just wanted to point out, is part of this in the packet, Bill, that public had an opportunity to look at?
It is supposed to be in the packet.
Because not only does it demonstrate the roads that we're doing this year, it has the grades for...
Correct. It's an analysis of all the roads in the township and their condition, yes.
Right.
And that's something that Matt puts together every year. He updates it as we do new programs and new repairs, and as he reviews them every year, that list gets updated.
Perfect, thank you. Is there any comments from the public?
Peter, I don't have the budget on hand. What do we budget for?
$200,000.
From General or Liquid Fuels?
Liquid Fuels.
Thank you.
And we still have the money that we didn't, we didn't expend any of that last year. We probably could have expended a little more this year, but we did bump it up at Matt's suggestion, just to allow us to do more roadways. We did bump up, I believe we had 150 last year. We bumped it up to 200 this year.
Thank you.
Okay. All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Just to give a little background on the next two, four, six, seven resolutions and recommendations. As many of you know, we've been trying to pursue some grant applications for several projects. So the next few recommendations and resolutions are in support of grant applications for projects for the Sharon Basin retrofit, which is a requirement from our MS4 program, as well as for the Goodley Road culvert replacement project. So there's several grants we're gonna attempt to apply for and hopefully be successful. So with that, I will make a motion to recommend to contract with Millennium Strategies to write and submit a PA DCED Watershed Restoration Protection Program grant for the Sharon Basin retrofit project in an amount not to exceed $3,000. for the Sharon Basin retrofit project in a mountain not to exceed $3,000.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Iacono and seconded by Supervisor Derek Hinesian. Is there any comments from the board?
Just want to comment that this is budgeted for this year. It wasn't a budget for grant writing services.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my question is, all seven of these are related to one or two of the different, is it Sharon Basin and Goodley Road? Is that the extent of all of these?
Yes, they're all tied to that, yeah.
Just for the public?
There's different grant programs, there's and you'll see as we go through it, they're not all for the same grant.
Understood, yeah, just so that as we're going through, it's it's gonna be a lot of different things, but all for the same purpose. Is there any other comments from the board? From the public on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, with that, I'd also like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-10, authorizing an application for a PA small water grant for the Goodley Road culvert replacement project.
Seconded. Motion made by Supervisor Iacono and seconded by myself. Is there any any comment on this one? Public or board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And in order to apply for that grant, we also have to commit matching funds. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-11, authorizing to commit to 15% matching funds for the PA small water grant for the Goodley Road culvert replacement project.
I second. Motion made by Supervisor Iacono and seconded by Supervisor Denny.
Could we, sorry, could we put a numerical number on that?
Sure, it is matching funds in the amount of $88,821.75. 15%. So total estimated project cost $592,145.
And that's in the proclamation?
That is in the resolution, correct.
Any other comment from the board? Public? Yes, please. Yeah? Please come up to the podium.
No, they're not at all.
Sorry, I'm just curious, Susan Rice, 1661 hands. I was just wondering, do you get like other bids from other companies? Is this $592,145 like the best bid or something?
No, that's an estimate, so it's not it's not the actual cost, it will go out to bid if we're, when we pursue the project, so it could come in lower, it could come in higher, but that's what our engineers prepare to cost estimate, and that's what they look for when we do the application.
Okay, this thing kind of high.
Yeah, I mean, it's a fairly big project, and the other ones are the same, they're all going to be based off of the engineer's cost estimate right now.
So something has broken down there, is that what has happened?
The culvert's getting a little bit older, so we want to try and look for some funds to replace it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, I would like to make a motion for Resolution 2025-12, authorization, authorizing an application for a PA small water grant for Sharon Stormwater Basin repairs and upgrades project.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded by Supervisor Iacono. Any comments on this from the board or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I will make a motion for Resolution 2025-13, authorizing to commit 15% of matching funds for the PA small water grant for the Sharon Stormwater Basin repairs and upgrades project.
I'll second that motion and just add that this matching fund amount is $45,275.2 overall project cost estimated at $301,833.48.
Motion made and seconded by Supervisor Iacono, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I also, I guess I'll say this, something we had talked about, although we're pursuing these grants this year, what do you anticipate the timing to be if these grants?
So they like to say it'll be in the fall, but based on a previous experience, it probably won't be until January of next year before it's awarded. It seems to be the December, January, sometimes even February timeframe takes them to review and process these.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing on, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-14, authorizing application for a DCED flood mitigation grant for the Goodley Road culvert replacement project.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Supervisor Derek Hinesian and seconded by Supervisor Iacono. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then I'd also like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-15, authorizing to commit 15% matching funds for the DCED flood mitigation grant for the Goodley Road culvert replacement project, and it's the 15% match. We already talked about this, is $88,821.75.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Supervisor Derek Hinesian and seconded by Supervisor Iacono, any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Onto the announcements.
Yes, so the Delaware County Conservation District has asked us to be a partner with them in a non-point source pollution workshop, where we will be working with them to label storm drains which discharge to creeks with a little stamp, some of you may already have them in your neighborhoods that say no dumping drains to stream, so we're gonna continue that effort with them, so they're I believe we've already posted the announcement on the website, and you have to sign up in advance because they're trying to get a headcount, but that event will take place on May 10th, from 10:30 AM to 12:00. We'll be meeting here and then kind of fanning off in groups to the different neighborhoods to install the logos on the storm drains. So please take a look at the website, and we hope that you can attend and participate and register in advance.
So Supervisor Iacono, so they'll be able to grab the link from our website?
There's a, we've posted the flyer, the county gave us a flyer, there's a QR code, they can scan the QR code and register that one.
And anything that they need as far as clothing or P P?
Nah, just dress comfortably and we'll have anything else they might need.
It's on the township socials as well.
Oh, yeah, there's also, we have it posted here, so if anybody here is interested, you can scan, there's one on the table in the back, thank you, Becca. I told her to spread the word, so she's trying, so if you're interested, you can register here tonight while you're here.
Great, thank you, and the point there is to highlight and identify where it's all our catch basins.
Yeah, all the inlets that drain to the stream, obviously, we don't want people dumping any, anything that they shouldn't be down the drain, and they're gonna be identified with a little logo in the county, the county's reviewing, Brett went through and marked up a plan of all the inlets that he believes need them that are in hotspot areas, so we'll be working with the county to take care of it.
Thank you.
Another announcement is, and I think our township manager already covered this, but the Bethel Township's spring yard waste curbside event is on Monday, May 12th, so get your waste ready.
It gets picked up with the normal trash pickup.
That is Monday, so I don't think.
Day before, okay.
It's whoever, I don't, like, some people might have Monday.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's Monday, township, whether it depends on what precinct you're in, it relates to your regular.
It may not be regular trash day for you, but it's yard waste day.
Great, thank you. And the last item, I think Dr. Hinesian did touch on this as well, so there's paper shredding and drug takeback event, that's I think typically held behind this building, is that accurate?
Yes.
Near the police station, so May 17th from 9:00 to 11:00, bring any paper that you want destroyed or any expired drugs, and they will take it off your hands.
And be mindful that we did adjust the timing on these events this year, they used to be 9:00 to 12:00. But everybody gets there right at 9:00 o'clock and it's crazy busy. So we shortened them a little bit to kind of condense the time from 9:00 to 11:00, so they do not extend that extra alley this year.
Thank you. That concludes the topics on the agenda, is there any other comment from the public? Yeah.
Right. There you go. Hey, John Nevy, 3213 Sarum Farm Lane. Two small issues or two small requests, one, with the arrival of spring and those of us on Sarum Farm, the annual return of the fighting dogs in the park off the leashes again has already begun. I know the township is part of the planning and, you know, for the upgrades, are looking at options to keep people away from the homes. I think I'd asked this last year and I'd ask it again, if there's any options that can be considered in the interim until a final plan is in place to try and direct traffic and those who are using the park to stay, you know, further away from the houses, and in particular, keep the dogs on leashes and not having balls turn around, and reiterate, it's not a dog park, it is a park. It would be most appreciated by the residents who are I've been woken several times by, you know, I had this happen last year, it's happening again now with, you know, waking up to dogs fighting because two people pass by and one's off a leash and they start going at each other. I've already had at least three balls over my fence line that we've gone through, you know, that we've had to throw out. And, you know, again, so any efforts that the township can do to make, to try and mitigate these types of issues would be would be appreciated.
We'll take a look, I also, I know some of our other parks, we have signage for dogs on leash, I know we have signs at Schaefer, but I don't know if they have any dog-related if we have anything about that on there, so we'll take a look at that.
Appreciate that. The second is, it's more of a local question, with the Sarum Farm, the new Sarum Farm, the the new side of Sarum Farm development completed, or it looks like, how close are we?
There's one more lot left.
I thought it was.
It's kind of almost done, I guess, but, and then they have to pave that road, right?
That's, that was
Yes.
You answered my next question. That was my next question.
They will be.
Do you have any idea when we expect, because it looks like that, it looked like that last lot is again, I can't get back there and it's, it goes into
Yeah, that doesn't even match from.
It goes into the other side.
The last lot is, the house is up, it's complete, I think, or very close to being complete, and the site work is they need to do some more stabilization, but it's pretty far along. I would suspect sometime this summer, because they're gonna want to wrap up that job, and that would include resurfacing.
That, you answered my question, that's where I was going with that, so, yeah, just curious, you know, spring's here and trying to get an idea.
Yeah, now's the time to do it.
Yeah.
And we're holding escrow for that, so they won't be able to walk away.
And I just ask that, you know, as you're doing the inspection, just check the curbs and things, there was some damage, you know, I know that they put the curbs in, but we know that there was, you know, post-construction damage, things like that sort of happens, so. Anyway, that's it, thank you.
You know, we do have a leash line in Bethel Township too, so if you call 911, you know, we can get someone out, maybe the dog.
The problem is by the time I get to the window, they're pulling the dogs away and scattering off, so it's one of those things like, you know, you know, do I really want to, I'm in my pajamas and getting my tea and coffee, and do I really want to go knocking on the door? He's not here, and, you know, well, they were here for 10 minutes again, so, anyway, appreciate it. Play the show.
Dave McDaniel, 1415 Zebby Road East. Amen. Big old Ford five. Some people can't. At the PACS meeting the other night, you two guys couldn't make it.
Right.
You guys were supposed to bring the wine and cheese.
I'll make it up to you next time.
And I have a description for you two, you two supervisors, and let me read the whole thing, because it's not bad. And before I start, does anybody feel threatened? If you do, the gentleman back there in the white shirt, good work on your job. Excellent guy back there. I told him one night, anytime I'm sitting in front of him, it's a good night. He's one of a kind. I seen him take down a guy one night. I wouldn't want to mess with him. And I got a ticket I need fixed. I'm gonna refer to Mr. Davey, Supervisor Davey. I got a friend, just
Agostino.
Well, I'm gonna say Mike.
Mike, there you go.
Okay. And let me finish this whole article, okay?
Is it a poem?
Well, it's a description, it's a description out of the, I love this livestream. It's a description out of the Google internet, okay?
Oh, yeah.
Bookends, okay, one bookend, two bookends, this is good. Bookends are an unsung hero of a well-curated shelf or desk, while serving a practical service by preventing books from toppling over, that's the things in the center. They also help do power to enhance your overall look and feel of the room. I appreciate your questions tonight, Mr. Davey. Supervisor Davey.
Thank you.
He caught some good topics there. And I want to go back to March 024, when you gentlemen had to leave. When my kids and grandkids were, my kids are all in their late 40s, okay, I think my grandkids are in their 20s. There was a book character. Mr. Wallo, where's Wallo at? When you guys left that night, I'm still lost of where the $700,000 went. Can anybody tell me where the $700,000 went? It was $685,000. It was supposed to be dedicated, it was taken out of the budget for the Schaefer property?
You're talking about a year ago?
Yeah, it was March 24th, March 24th, you guys were dead set against it. But whatever happened to the $700,000, was it few people that were left, did it go towards the Schaefer property?
That was a grant, it was a grant application that we did not win, if I remember correctly.
Did not win, so the $700,000.
Did not get spent.
Did not get spent, but you guys, you three wanted to spend it. $700,000 you guys wanted to spend. $700,000 in the township budget. Grounds and buildings, $150,000, EMS, $335,000, highway department, $307,000, I'm not gonna read all these. The police officer salary, $539,000. Next big one was township administration, $329,000. That $700,000 that you wanted to give away goes towards this stuff. This stuff. And for those of you who don't like paying taxes, I know with the hand man, some of us don't like paying taxes. That $700,000 at least 10 or 12 things here, that could have paid in full if that was spent on a Schaefer property. Next topic, Clayton Park, that was 59 acres given to Delaware County Park and Recreation, it's a park. A small part of that park is in Bethel Township, I think we're down here, when I looked at the map, on 322 McGorient Mine Road where then white poles are all broken down, I think that's the Bethel Park that run down, bowing there. But there was no problems that I know of, and I'm not an expert on that. Why is the Schaefer Reserve such an issue? If it was supposed to be a park, why did Mr. Schaefer have it deeded as a reserve? Should that have been bought, before you people bought that property, now using taxpayers to fight that? The Mr. Schaefer, Dr. Schaefer, he didn't want a park there? Because it could have been deeded a park, right, not a reserve?
He wanted it open to the public.
So why is it a reserve and not a park like Clayton Park?
Every reserve allows you to still have a park inside of it.
Okay, because he was here that night, I don't know why he didn't talk.
He talked at one meeting, he didn't talk last time he came.
Okay, that's all, but I just, I was just curious where the $700,000 went to. And like I said, you two gentlemen on the end, hey, okay, been here a long time. And I still can't pronounce your name.
Point in a poem next month is the goal, I mean, a nice poem would be good.
Yeah, but the bookends, that's a positive thing, you guys are rock hard, man, strong, sturdy. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't pronounce the name either. Please.
Ed Deicher, 1108 Old Post Circle. 3720 Ebyk Road has been an eyesore ever since I can remember. And
28, 3728?
3728. Pretty sure, I might be one or two digits off.
We could probably find it, I'm guessing.
I think that's it. Three and a half years ago, it changed hands, so everybody got excited that, you know, finally somebody was gonna clean up the property and make something of it. Um, they started work on it. And the design kind of caught everybody off guard, but, you know, if those were the plans that were submitted and approved, then so be it. But as of now, the property is maybe sixty six percent finished on the outside, the grounds are a mess. Uh, I think we have a dumpster ordinance now. Uh, there's been a wolf dumpster on the property for so long that the orange, bright orange color is now a light orange color. Property seems to ebb and flow with trash, and I don't know if they're recycling what they're taking out of the house or whatever, but um, I know the neighbors are getting antsy again, and uh, I know one of the neighbors told me they had last month reached out to uh, Dr. Anderson with a complaint, and um, we're just wondering what the township can do to push them along, and I don't know if there's timelines involved with permits uh, these days or whatever, I know when I built my two houses over on Old Post Circle, I had a Catania engineer sitting in front of my house for five weeks watching everything that we were doing and making sure we were delivering everything on time, so you know, I think people are just looking to see if there's gonna be some resolution and some you know, cleanup done in in the future, you know, in the near future, now that spring's here and, you know, everything's um, you know, they should be, you know, we see people there from time to time, not all the time. Uh, but if the township could, you know, look into it and apply any pressure they could do, that would be.
Have you received some complaints recently?
We have, we have sent Catania out there, our local official has been out there, we're in the process of.
Do they have an occupancy permit?
Yes, that that house is, the house started about maybe four or five, two, three years.
Couple of years.
Couple of years.
They have an occupancy permit?
Yes, they have, or no, they have.
They have a building permit?
Building.
Okay.
They don't have occupancy.
That was the gentleman that was.
Uh, typically, there's cars there overnight.
So they are occupying.
That's why, that's why.
For a while there wasn't, but lately, there's, there's definitely been cars there twenty four hours a day, so anything that can be done.
We'll send them back out and see what we can follow up with.
The cleanup of the park's been great, glad to hear they're taking care of the boardwalk, because walking through there in the winter time was downright treacherous. I found out something interesting just a few nights ago, I couldn't figure out why all these Delaware, I spent a lot of time over there with my new dog and my granddaughter. All these cars from Delaware coming in, sitting in the park half hour or so, and then they take off and leave, I didn't realize a lot of the gambling apps, you have to be out of the state to place your bets. So it's a very popular location to people from Delaware, and some of the cars that are coming in and out of there are completely blacked out, you can't even see through the windshields. They're so dark, blacked out, so.
Maybe we should put a toll on them.
If the police might spend a little more time just stopping in and out of there and seeing what's going on, I mean, it's it's gotten interesting over there, it seems like since the weather's gotten well nicer, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, is there any other comment from the public? Yes.
Diane Smith sixteen oh two Wendy Way, um, I guess two questions, one of which is I mentioned it last, I believe last month or the month before, can we look into taking our addresses out of the meeting minutes? Um, it's just in this day of you know, people stealing your identities and everything, and I believe, you know, and why do we have to have our addresses on the minutes for the, you know, on a public record like that, and can't you just say our name? And then a resident of Bethel, you know, and then, I mean, you guys know your constituents, or you should. You know, I mean.
Yeah, that was a discussion, I don't know where.
I don't think, I don't know.
Yeah, I I mean, we could probably do that, I'll tell you that, uh, I could get your voter records in about two seconds with your address.
I know, I'm well, yeah.
And it'd be a lot easier than looking through the minutes, but, um, you know, I think we need them. The other problem is we're streaming now, you know, and we can't, we can't redact that from from that. And we need them to establish residency, I mean, the the Sunshine Act says residents and business owners are allowed to speak at meetings, and they're representatives, of course. But something we can take another look at.
So you're saying even?
A non-residence can't, I'm sorry.
Non-residents under Sunshine Act are not supposed to, you know, be speaking meetings. Whether there's a free speech issue, because we're a local government anyhow, is a difference.
Yeah, I would think, I mean, I've gone to other.
Um, but the Sunshine Act requirements are are residents, and that's why every municipality has someone, state, at least the street they live on, um, when they come up to speak, but uh, I'll 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 sit down with Bill and we'll see if we can, uh, uh, you know, engineer a solution.
Kind of sounds like regardless, even if it's not in the minutes, it's streaming, so they can go back and watch it.
I mean, if you're really motivated and you want to know my address, I mean, you know, you're gonna find it, but it still makes me a little uncomfortable, you know, with with don't you agree, Chee, putting you on the spot, but, you know, just one more place where you, you know, I don't.
No, but as we said, you know, it's it's.
It's in the air. I know, I just, I just been thinking about it lately.
It's, I mean, every municipality displays a name and address in their minutes.
It it, I'm sorry, is the issue more that it's in the minutes than anything else?
I guess, I just, I I, you know, I just, I don't know, I I look at the minutes and I see my name and address, I'm just like, you know, damn, you know, like, I don't know, just I don't know, I just, I'm not that comfortable with it, I don't know, I'm sure you guys aren't either, I mean, you don't have your addresses on on there, and although if I wanted to find your address, I'm sure I could very easily, you know, so that's the world of Google today, anyway, I just wanted to mention it, just see if we could look into it a little, that's it. And then my second question is my monthly question, you know, what's going on with Schaefer Park? Uh, any updates?
Not not a ton, um, we have been working with PennDOT, um, and, you know, they're concerned, as some of the residents were about sight distance coming out of the driveway. Um, so the engineer is um, working with them and um probably gonna have to do some additional survey of the roadway uh, to see what modifications might be needed to provide a safe access, so at this point um, they're looking into that, but nothing uh, nothing else has really been done at this time.
Right, um, what about on the Goodley Road part?
There's no changes there.
Changes, no permits have been?
No, no permits for anything, all the permits will go in at one time.
Oh, they will?
Yeah, well, the the H O P, all the environmental permits will go in at one time, and then the PennDOT permit might be a little bit separate. Um, but it it's not gonna be they're not done separately, it's all one project, so when we submit for our N P D S permit, it will include the Bethel portion and the Goodley portion, when we submit, well, H O P is just the Bethel portion, but.
Do you know when, what month?
I don't, it's taking longer than we thought, because PennDOT only can meet with us like once a month, and they're kind of giving us strips and drabs of information, so.
Okay, all right, just wanted to know if there was anything new going on.
Nothing at this point, no, I mean, they they they're working on updating the plan still, I I kind of seen and had some conversations um, with them about modifying the berm and things like that, but um, nothing's finalized at this point.
Right, are you gonna have another meeting about the final, you know?
There will be another meeting at some point when we get further down the road with the design.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments from the public? Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Pressure made by Supervisor Iakono and seconded by Supervisor Derhenassian, all is in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.